I'd like to call to order this regular meeting of the Lincoln Lancaster County Planning Commission of September 18th, 2019. A printed agenda is available outside the hearing room, and a copy of the full agenda, including the staff reports, is available at the front of the chambers with the clerk. The Open Meetings Act is posted just inside the doors at the back of the room. If you parked in the parking garage across the street to the north, the gate is open and no parking coupons are needed. Out of courtesy for those attending the meeting, the commissioners and the staff, cellular phone usage is not permitted in these chambers at any portion during this meeting. We will appreciate your cooperation. Please note, the Planning Commission action today is final on the following agenda items: 1.1 Comprehensive Plan Conformance 1-9-0-0-9, and 4.1 Special Permit 1-9-0-3-8. Any aggrieved person may appeal final action of the Planning Commission to the City Council or the County Board by filing a notice of appeal with the clerk within 14 days following the action of the Planning Commission. The Planning Commission action on all other items is a recommendation to the City Council or County Board. The first item of business is the approval of the minutes of the regular meeting held September 4th, 2019.
Sir Campbell?
Second, Beckius.
Jerry?
Okay. Albadre?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Edgerton?
Yes.
Finnegan?
Yes.
Joy?
Yes.
Reiman Yost?
Yes.
Shear?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
Corr?
Yes.
Motion carried, nine to zero.
The next item of business is the consent agenda. Items on the consent agenda will be called at the same time and will not be scheduled for a separate public hearing unless there is a request from someone wishing to speak, or at the request of a commission member. I will ask Jerry to read all of the consent agenda items into the record. Once those items are read, she will ask if there is anyone wishing to speak. If you wish to speak on an item on the consent agenda, we would ask that you stand and state that item. That item will then be removed from the consent agenda and scheduled as a separate public hearing under Section 3 of today's agenda. All items remaining on the consent agenda will be voted upon in total with a motion for approval. Jerry, will you please call the items on the consent agenda?
Yes, thank you. Item 1.1 is Comprehensive Plan Conformance 1-9-0-0-9 to review as to conformance with the 2040 Lincoln Lancaster County Comprehensive Plan to amend the city of Lincoln's six-year capital improvement program for fiscal year 2018-19 to 2023-24 by adding the expansion of an existing Lincoln Electric Systems substation on a property generally located at 2208 North 56th Street. Again, this is final action on this item unless appealed to the City Council within 14 days. Item 1.2A is Change of Zone 1-9-0-2-1 from H3 Highway Commercial District to B2 Planned Neighborhood Business District, and the associated use permit is 1-9-0-1-3 to allow for the development flexibility and the option to construct multifamily residential dwellings on the first floor with waivers to setbacks. Both of these are generally located at North 27th and Fletcher Avenue. Are there any ex parte communications to be disclosed on these items?
I don't see any.
Is there anyone here wishing to speak on any of these items? If so, please stand and state that item.
Okay, I don't see anyone. I would entertain a motion.
Move approval of the consent agenda, Shear?
Second, Campbell.
Jerry?
Okay, this is for the approval of the consent agenda. Albadre?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Edgerton?
Yes.
Finnegan?
Yes.
Joy?
Yes.
Reiman Yost?
Yes.
Shear?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
Corr?
Yes.
Motion carried, nine to zero.
There are no requests for deferral, so we will now proceed to public hearing. The staff will make a brief presentation, and the applicant will then be requested to present his or her testimony, followed by those who wish to testify in support, followed by those who wish to testify in opposition. The staff will then be given an opportunity to respond to the testimony, and then the applicant shall have an opportunity for rebuttal. If during your testimony you have copies of documents or materials you would like distributed to the Planning Commission members and/or included as part of the record, please provide that information to the clerk for distribution. Each person testifying should state their name and address, and shall have five minutes to speak unless additional time is requested and granted. The timer will go off after four minutes, then you will have one minute to wrap up your testimony. The Planning Commission will vote immediately at the close of the public hearing unless the commission votes to defer action or continue the public hearing. Jerry, will you please call the first public hearing item?
Yes. Item 4.1 is Special Permit 1-9-0-3-8 to allow for the development of a community unit plan with waivers to sidewalks, street trees, streetlights, and block length on property generally located at 110th Street and Sawtillo Road. This is final action on this item unless appealed to the City Council within 14 days. Are there any ex parte communications to be disclosed on this item?
I don't see any.
Thank you.
Tom?
Tom Chaka, Planning Staff. This special permit is for a community unit plan to develop 10 lots on approximately 132 acres. Site is located at South 110th and Sawtillo on the north side of Sawtillo Road, right here. The 10 dwellings would be placed in this portion of the property. These lots are about .8 to just under one acre. This is in the build-through area, so the rest of this is conceptual to show how it could be developed once the city gets out there. This right here is the future South Beltway. This is a pipeline, a pipeline planning area. So you can see the initial, lots are outside of that planning area. The lots will be served by a community wastewater system lagoon that'll be here. And, let's see, water is proposed to be by Lancaster County Rural Water District. At this time, the Water District has not approved water hookups for this development. My understanding is the applicant still has to apply to the Rural Water District on that. The streets are proposed to be private and will either be gravel or paved. You are allowed to have gravel roads outside the city limits. The site is mostly in Tier 2 in the conference plan. This is an area where city services could be beyond 2040 before they get out there. Sawtillo Road shows an access here to Sawtillo Road is classified as a major collector in the conference of plan. It is not shown in Access Management at this location. Basically, in Access Management, it stops at about 84th Street and is not shown further east. Traffic counts on Sawtillo Road, taken in June of 2019, showed an average daily traffic count of 1,261 trips between 98th and 110th Street on Sawtillo. A forecast was done for 2040 to show the daily volume of trips on this area. That came out to about 1,300 trips per day from 98th to 120th. So this would be after the Beltway is open, and the Beltway shows really no effect on traffic on this part of Sawtillo Road, would not decrease the traffic. Based on the traffic volumes and the speed limit of 55 miles per hour on Sawtillo, Lancaster County Engineer and Lincoln Transportation and Utilities Departments are recommending that turn lanes be conditioned, both a right-hand turn lane and a left-hand turn lane off of Sawtillo Road into this development. LTU and the county engineer are also recommending that Hunter's Lane be relocated so that it is in line with 110th Street to the south. Lining these two streets up is safer than to have two T intersections onto the street. Other AGCUPs that have been done within the three-mile area of Lincoln over the last several years, there's only been three. One was located at the intersection of two local streets, so there's no need for traffic improvements. Another one was located at 134th and Adams Street. Adams is paved and shown as a major collector in the conference of plan. No turn lanes were required for that development off of Adams. The third CUP in this area is located at South 68th and Sawtillo Road. Both South 68th and Sawtillo are shown at that location are shown as minor arterials in the comp plan and an access management policy. For that CUP, there was turn lanes required into the development off of Sawtillo. The applicant is also requesting waivers to sidewalks, street trees, streetlights, and block lengths. Sidewalks, street trees, and streetlights are typically not required in rural subdivisions, and actually, if these lots were one acre or larger, they wouldn't need the waiver. It's automatically exempted, and these are very close to one acre in size. Block length, 1320 feet is the maximum block length for a development. That mainly is in the city subdivision and mainly for urban subdivisions. It's not usually practical in these AGCUPs that have much larger lots. That's all I have.
Any questions for Tom?
Yeah, go ahead.
Tom, the map that was sent to us doesn't go quite far enough. You're saying that the Hunter Road, the one that's conceptual at this time, is the one that they're recommending be moved to over to line up?
No, they're...
You're saying the one that they want to put in now?
Yes. So they're showing, let's probably show it better. They're showing their entrance right here. 110th is about here. We're recommending that this not be here. They take access here, and they build this.
Okay.
Tracy?
Can you explain to me the difference between a major collector and a minor arterial? So, no.
Arterials are to handle more traffic. That's about as...
Okay.
Usually probably have higher speed limits, too, I'm guessing.
Bob Simmering, LTU?
Major collector versus minor arterial?
Major collector would be a street that, as he says, has lower traffic volumes, possibly lower speed. It would allow for more connection points. We try to have the arterials be more through streets so there are not as many intersections, and typically don't allow access to single-use properties.
And what is Sawtillo right here at this location?
This location? It's a major collector.
Okay, it is not a minor arterial?
Major collector in the conference of plan. It is not shown in Access Management.
Okay, understood. Thank you.
Any other questions for staff? Okay, applicant.
While that's being distributed, Madam Chair, members of the commission, my name is Tom Houston. My address is 233 South 13th Street, Suite 1900 here in Lincoln. I'm appearing before you today on behalf of Ron DeBoer and Carol Dama, the owners of the property in question. Also with me are Matt Langston and Mark Palmer from Olson Associates Project Engineers. I think it's important to step back and take a little bit of, understand a little bit of background of this property. My client acquired the property several decades ago, probably 20-plus years ago. It's been marginally productive agricultural ground. The cost of production really exceeds the yields of harvest, and my client had been contemplating developing this property. At some point, that decision was really forced on them over the last six months as the state in Nebraska was acquiring right-of-way for the South Bypass. South Bypass, as noted by Mr. Chaka, does traverse the northwest corner of this property, and takes about 30 acres out of the total. So in order to preserve density, the application had to be submitted to move this forward. As a part of that, given the fact that it's marginal farm ground, given the fact that it's located on hard-surface roads, given the fact that it had access to, or will have access to, the Rural Water District potable water supply, and ultimately will provide, can provide a community wastewater system, we had contemplated taking a change of zone forward to the AGR zone because those are the factors that the county really looks at in change of zone from the AG to the AGR. But because of the pipeline planning area that would really gut that subdivision, it was elected not to. So the remaining option was really to move forward on a cluster development, which is really favored under the conference of plan for development within the AG zone. So with that, the application was submitted for 10 lots, as you see in front of you. When I read the staff report and I see five pages of comments and conditions, I'm just astounded that there's that many conditions attached to this kind of subdivision. It's 10 lots. We have to keep that in mind. Notwithstanding the fact that there are five pages, we agree with most of them, but there are two that we take exception to, and that's why I handed out the motion to amend. The motion to amend would seek to modify Condition 1.5 and would seek to delete Condition 1.6. And I tried to provide you some bullet points of the rationale behind our thinking on these points. The first issue is really Condition 1.5. That deals with the alignment of the road and whether it would align with 110th Street or 112th Street, which is also called, I think, Hunter Road. Our proposal is that we would like to currently align at 112th Street, and then when this property is urbanized at some point in the future, that 112th Street would be plotted as private road, can be removed, and it can be relocated to 110th Street. Now, I believe that's going to be 50-plus years from now, and we'll get into that in a little bit, but I think that is really the proposal, and that's the nature of the motion to amend. And the reasons are, number one, 110th Street is a gravel road right now and does not carry very much traffic. Number two, as Mr. Chaka mentioned, I wanted to show you on the access management policy, see if I can, oops, I'm going the wrong way, sorry. This is the access management categories that defines the various streets that are subject to the policy within the city of Lincoln, and it does define freeways. You see a freeway, which is the South Beltway, traversing from 120th Street all the way over to Highway 77. Where I put the X is the property in question. It's not located on any of the designated major arterials, minor arterials, Collector Street, anything. Major collector is not even defined in the access management policy because it doesn't have a role in the access management policy. The next thing I wanted to point out is really the conference of plan, the L-Plan 2040, does have the 2040 priority growth areas. And again, you'll see my artistic little red dot down there on Sawtillo Road at about approximately 110th Street. You'll see the black-and-white dash line around, too. That is the service limit of the city of Lincoln as shown in the conference of plan where we can provide sanitary sewer. Can I have a few more minutes to finish up? So that's over a mile from this location, and it's going to be 50-plus years before that sanitary sewer service could be provided here because it has to come down through a different drainage basin. So this site is never going to be provided sanitary sewer, at least within our near future. You also see that it's really outside of the Tier 2 area. Tier 2 priority area shows 2060 under the conference of plan before it will be provided urban services. One of the things that, one of the principal reasons that we seek to provide access at 112th is really the site distance issue, and on Sawtillo Road, there's a high hill to the west of the property, let's say it's 108th, 107th, thereabouts. And at 110th Street, that distance is approximately 921 feet, but it's 1,445 feet from the crest of the hill down to 112th Street, which we think helps increase the safety of the access point on the subdivision. And then the other reason is that the cost differential, it's $50,000 to $60,000 to change this location to move the driveway to 110th Street as opposed to 112th Street. So for that purpose, we seek to have the access at 112th rather than 110th. The last issue deals with the turn lanes. The staff report indicates that a turn lane or the access management policy, if it applied, would require a turn lane with 240 feet of stacking. Well, if there's 10 lots and there's two cars per home, I mean, each car could line up in that turn lane according to the access management policy. We think that it's unnecessary, that any benefit is outweighed by the cost of this to the property. If there's 10 lots, the trip count manual indicates that these lots would generate approximately nine trips per day, which is about 90 trips in total in a day, which is six or seven cars per hour, so it's roughly one car every eight minutes. We don't think it's necessary to have the turn lanes at this location because, for one reason, we think it's a safer location at 112th Street rather than 110th Street. The other thing that we take issue with is it just doesn't make sense, is the fact that the staff reports indicates that the bypass will not have an effect on the traffic on this road. I just don't think that's true. I think the traffic on the road will diminish because right now Sawtillo Road is a de facto bypass. People use that to cut over to Highway 77, and I think that will be diminished as the South Bypass is constructed. But one of the principal reasons is that this cost of the turn lanes is over $200,000, and that would eliminate the ability to move this project forward. The other thing I did want to point out is when you look at, I'm not sure I can get everything reflected on here. What is on the overhead now is really the plans for the South Bypass, and the propping question's right here. You'll see down here at 98th Street, the Department of Roads has plans for a bridge over the bypass, excuse me, over Sawtillo, and then access really to 96th Street located west or east of the bypass, and then go north of 98th Street. Neither of those locations, the Department of Transportation, has not designed turn lanes for traffic on Sawtillo Road exiting at those different locations at 98th and 96th Street. And I think most of the traffic will be utilizing Sawtillo primarily for access to the north and to the, certainly to the west. The other thing, last thing I'd mention is that Mr. Chaka did say that there's a project approved at 68th and Sawtillo that did require turn lanes. It didn't get built because of the cost, but I'd also submit to you that the data indicates that those trips per day there are over 6,600 trips per day, which is more than five times the amount that would be generated here, or that is going past this property here. I've taken more than my time, so I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Mr. Houston?
Tom, do you know if there's any other gravel roads that have required turn lanes?
Not to my knowledge.
Okay.
Tom, can you, you alluded to but did not get to the eventual proposed abandonment and then replacing of the entrance road onto Sawtillo Road. How do you envision that happening?
I think this diagram would show it best. Our intent is, for the short term...
There we go, okay.
For the short term, we utilize this location at 112th Street. Sure. When the property can be urbanized, when it can be developed, it's going to be, right now it would be plotted as an outlot. It's easy to close that. And that's one of the reasons that we didn't want to dedicate it, because then we had to come back to vacate it, and it gets more complicated at that point. We also envision, in our covenants for the subdivision, we're going to notify the property owners, long-term, access is going to be aligned over here. And I didn't even want to raise the issue that Sawtillo Road's really the correction road. I mean, we have, you know, 84th turning into 82nd Street. We have 70th Street turning into 68th Street. I mean, all the way down west, right? I'm not going to raise that here. We're saying at some point in the future, when this property is urbanized 50 years from now, we'll close this access onto Sawtillo, open it at 110th Street in accordance with the request of LTU. And at that point, there will be multiple lots, not just 10. Thank you.
And you said 110th going south is gravel, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Our request is that we don't dispute, obviously, we have a lot of regulations in land use, and it's always about balancing the interests. And here, we're supportive of all the interests. We're not, nobody wants to build an unsafe subdivision, but we believe in the cost-benefit and that we can protect safety purposes with other design mechanisms, including site distance, because otherwise, this property cannot afford those costs. That development cannot.
Tom, is it 10 lots for 40 years, or is it 75 lots?
It's 10 lots until a change of zone could be approved at some point in the future. It'd have to be an R3, for example, before. And that isn't going to happen until it's urbanized, until sanitary sewer can be provided.
Okay.
10 lots is the next, all we can do for 50 years, in my estimation.
And there's a time delay, too, as to before you can even get water?
Yeah. There's a condition. The staff report indicates that we cannot final plat until we have water service. My client has been in close contact with Rural Water District Number 1, and we're aware of the fact that they're making waterline improvements. He did make the application this week, and he paid the deposit of $6,000 for that application, so he's ready to move forward. The Rural Water District will not approve it until they actually make the improvements, and we're fine with that. We understand it's going to be yet in 2019. You know, at best, it's realistic to envision, if things go swimmingly and homes got built, they could be occupied in spring of 2022 at best, probably what we're talking about.
So the timeline for the water main improvements...
Yes.
...are going to happen within the next year or two?
Correct. Yes. And... And obviously, construction would not be started until that approval from the Rural Water District was obtained.
Any other questions for Mr. Houston right now? Okay.
Thank you.
Testimony in support of this application? Testimony in support? Any testimony in opposition? Staff? Do you want to come back up? How do you guys feel about the amendment that was proposed by the applicant?
I think planning would stick by our conditions in the staff report.
Tom, would you, would you agree that if we didn't do turn lanes at this time, that when it moves from 112th to 110th, that then turn lanes would be required? Would you agree with that?
I think, yeah. Wherever the street is connecting to Saltillo, we would still want turn lanes on Saltillo.
Well, the, at that time, the population's going to go up tremendously with a lot of additional lots. And at that time, it would make sense that turn lanes should be required. But at this point, with 10 homes, I'm not, if you go down South 56th, there's, just south of us, there's acreage development and it does not have turn lanes into it. Either on, I'm trying to think of the two street names. Bridle Lane, I believe, is one of them, and then the one north of Bridle. And they have far more acreages in that development than they're talking about here.
I guess I would just say that I know those acreage developments have been around for a long time. I think 56th probably, at the time those were developed, was a lot less traffic at the time. Saltillo is a pretty heavily used road, traffic with a high speed limit. And based on LTU and county engineers' recommendations, that's why we're requesting the turn lanes.
I have a question for Tom.
Sure.
Tom, is there any, is there any way that this could be more than 10 lots within the next 40 years? In your estimation, is there a way for that to happen?
Sometimes sewer gets moved up. Depends on development pressures, but it's hard to say.
Okay.
Would this area still drain to, back to 14th Street?
I'm not sure.
By understanding, a lot of that area would drain southwest. And that would require a pumping station or a new treatment plant. Is that correct?
Yeah, most of the property, it's an area that probably most of the property would drain to the southeast, and so it's quite some distant away from it. The area that is shown in dark green just to the north of it, on the north side of the Beltway, that's all back basically toward Stevens Creek. But this is really kind of just over the edge of it, so as it naturally drains today, most of it's probably not Stevens Creek, it's much further to the south.
Okay, thanks.
Kristi?
Tom, when they want to do more than 10 homes, will they have to come back in front of us for approval?
Yes.
Okay, so at that time, we could enforce more rules at the 110 intersection? If we viewed it, if we decided as a commission not to move that road at this time?
Sure. Yeah, more home, two ways they could do more lots. They're either come back sooner, request to change his own to AGR, which would give them more lots, or wait until the city gets out there with city services and then do something like an R3 urban subdivision.
Okay, thank you.
Tom, your staff report indicated that it was your perspective that it was safer to have the entryway be at 110th instead of 112th. And it talked about because of the two T intersections versus just having directly in. Can you, can you explain to me why that's safer? I mean, what's your rationale on that?
I think Bob could answer that better.
Okay.
Bob, something else, you again. Is our county engineer here? Not. It's actually in their jurisdiction, so they concurred with the recommendations we made. It's just simply the number of conflict points that arise on any stretch of road.
Okay. And at this point, 110th Street to the south is not traffic, heavily trafficked?
I don't have the traffic count on it, but I assume it is not.
Okay, thank you.
While you're up here, Bob, can you tell us, usually when we have to do stuff like traffic lights, signals, something like, or, you know, stop signs, we go by vehicle counts. What kind of vehicle counts require a turn lane?
Well, I think there's a couple of things to think about on Saltillo Road. One is that it's 55 mile an hour speed limit, and that is a significant traffic volume. The access management policy isn't the overall rulebook that covers the entire system. The knowledge of traffic safety, traffic counts, speed, and all those things are what dictate whether a turn lane is reasonable or not. We don't have a traffic study at this location. I think if there was a request to not have the turn lanes or to move this intersection, it'd be reasonable, rather than make assumptions that the traffic's going to go down or might not be that bad, or 900 feet of site distance isn't adequate. I think those things should be in a traffic study. It should be discussed with the transportation people, and there should be some engineering decisions made, not on assumptions. And we don't have that.
Okay, thank you.
Just to follow up on that, so, the way I interpret what you just said is that the condition on Saltillo Road, it's not just about this point at 112th or 110th, it's what happens in context to not only Saltillo but everything around it in terms of a traffic perspective, right?
Yes.
So, I mean, I think the site distance drawing that was shown was good. I mean, it makes, that's logical to me, but it's not specifically about just that little piece of road. It's what happens up and down and everything around.
And required site distance for 55 mile an hour speed limit is 550 feet. There's 900, so it is adequate.
Yeah, okay.
Other questions for city staff? Okay, thank you. Applicant?
Two things I wanted to point out. We didn't prepare a traffic study because even under the access management policy, which I argue doesn't apply, the triggering point is 100 cars in an hour. And we're arguing that this development will generate 90 trips per day. That's a huge difference. If this site were much closer to the city of Lincoln and subject to the access management policy, the traffic study wouldn't have been required. A trip count manual indicates that this development will generate 90 trips per day. And I think that's what a traffic study would tell you. The one thing I do want to emphasize is that there's language in the staff report, and Mr. Chaka indicated that in 2026, the trips per day will be 1,261. And then in 2040, there'll be 1,300. I think if pressed, my understanding is, that projection, that modeling, did not take into account the effect of the bypass on traffic on Saltillo. And I think that's a huge omission because I think it's, I think it's logical that most of the traffic will be located on the bypass to the extent it's possible because it's going to be much safer and it's going to be cleaner and it's going to be quicker and it's going to be better for everybody. So, what makes sense to me is that the bypass is going to dramatically affect traffic on Saltillo Road. It's going to become a local street. It's only going to have local traffic when that south bypass is built. That's why we don't think the additional cost of the turn lanes or locating the driveway at 110th Street is logical. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions. Sorry.
Questions for Mr. Houston?
Thank you.
Thank you. In a motion?
I would like to amend the conditions for approval of special permit 19038 and adopt number one that Mr. Houston has brought up about adding a note to the special permit requiring the build-through when it's developed in the future, that the entrance at 112th would close and the entrance would be formed at 110th. And then add to that, and turn lanes would be installed at the same time.
A second, so we can talk about it.
Sure, okay. Discussion.
Well, having lived on Pine Lake Road when it was a gravel road, the traffic counts are greatly diminished. And when you get past 84th on Saltillo Road, it really drops off tremendously. 68th is probably the most traveled area, 56th to 68th in that area. And at this point, I don't think the number of cars going in and out for 10 lots, and with the 900-foot viewing radius ahead of you, that should not develop into an accident-prone area at this time.
The 10, the number of lots don't concern me in terms of impact today. And while I do appreciate the forethought, I, trip counts, number of lots, the impact, I don't, I don't see it necessitating, at this point in time, the realignment or the turn lanes. The only, I'm also in favor of adding the note to the special permit stating that the road will be closed at 112th and realigned at 110th at the time of that development there. I am open to the idea of allowing additional flexibility, however, when it comes to eventual turn lanes on 110th and seeing how that area plays out in terms of development, rather than requiring those turn lanes to be added at that time.
The turn lanes would end up being on Saltillo, though.
Right.
And, okay, so, but at that time, if these other lots come forward for development, there probably would have to be a traffic study because it would be in the urbanization. And so that could determine the turn lanes.
And this property, but this property owner may not be the first to develop in that corner.
Right.
Either.
Yep.
Go ahead, Dennis.
Yeah, I, the amount of lots, it's become, I mean, it's clear to me that both the applicant and the city planning department are in agreement that there aren't going to be a tremendous amount of lots being built beyond these 10 for another 40 years. So, the lots and the amount of traffic seems to me, it's logical to me that we're not talking about a huge amount of traffic here. Saltillo is what concerns me. Saltillo has a reputation in our county of being a very dangerous road, and the speed limit here concerns me too. So, turn lanes and alignment of that, of that drive into the subdivision here, the small subdivision, for me, it's going to be a decision on, do I think that Saltillo at 55 miles an hour is safe for this kind of thing to occur without those additional amenities? So, I agree with what Tom says, though. I, as you can, as you can tell, I'm kind of going back and forth here. I, I also would like to see how this would develop, this area would develop, because we don't really know. You know, it's so far out. But those, that's just what's in my head. The road bothers me that what's being proposed doesn't, except for that, the reputation of that road. So, I'd like to hear what others say.
Dennis, you've, you've nailed exactly what my concerns are as well. And it's that balance that I think we're struggling with in the timeframe and the fact that there's only 10 lots at this time and frankly, in the short foreseeable future. However, Saltillo Road is problematic at that speed. And, I mean, I want to ensure we're doing the right thing for the long term. And I think that, I think that that's what we've attempted to do with this amendment, is try to balance those, those competing responsibilities here. But I'm waffling as well.
Yeah.
Something that I think of is, what if we require a traffic study and see how that would go before any further decisions are made? I guess, I don't know how I want to say that. Before we progress, because I'm wondering, I'd rather see the data and have concrete than just kind of our feelings. Because I agree, Saltillo is a very dangerous road, and I think that that is more, you know, in the lower number streets. And I'm, I'm not as familiar with it on the, on this part of the, that's traveled. I don't, what do you guys feel about something like that?
Generally, for 10 lots, I don't, I don't think-
Yeah, I, that's a thing.
I think the lot count matters. It is a relatively small lot count. And also, the one thing that has made me feel a little bit more comfortable is that I think that we are almost double the sightline in terms of visibility that would normally be desired, desirable to alert those traveling quickly on Saltillo Road that a stopped car may be in front of them.
Can we go ahead and just a little more, I want to make sure I understood the amendment as Dick proposed it. So, we're going to kind of keep number one as it was proposed.
And add that when the intersection would move from 112th to 110th, the turn lanes would be required at that time.
Okay. Any other discussion right now?
And, correct me if I'm wrong, but at 120th intersection, that's when Saltillo turns to gravel, correct?
I believe that's correct, but I'm not, is that correct?
So, okay. Ready to vote?
This is on the amendment?
Mm-hmm.
Jerry?
Some-
Oh, wait, wait, Tim's coming.
Yeah, there's some-
I think you need a, I- Tim C. City Law got to clean this up a little bit. Do you want a motion on the original? I think you need an original motion.
And then would you like the amendment?
And then let's do motions to amend. So, first thing in front of you is to get a motion to either approve or deny the special permit. At that point, you can consider motions to amend. You vote on the motions to amend, then you vote on the main motion.
I would move to approve the special, or the special, special permit 19038.
Second, Becky is. And then do you want to make the motion, Tim?
Should we vote on this one first?
You can't.
No.
No.
Then I also move to amend the motion to add a note to the special permit to require that when urban reserve component reflected for build-through development is developed in the future, the entrance road identified as Hunter's Avenue or 112th Street shall be abandoned and replaced with an entrance road onto Saltillo- be abandoned and replaced with an entrance road onto Saltillo Road that aligns with the corridor for 110th Street and turn lanes will be installed at that time.
I need a second. Don't I?
Yeah, I'll second again. I'll second the amendment as I did before.
Okay, so now we're ready to vote?
On the amendment.
On the amendment.
On the amendment.
As read by Commissioner Campbell and seconded.
No.
Yes.
Just give a moment.
Are you ready to call the vote?
Yep.
Okay.
On the amendment.
Yes.
Albadre?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Edgerton?
Yes.
Finnegan?
Yes.
Joy?
Yes.
Ryman Yost?
Yes.
Shear?
Yes.
Beckius?
No.
Core?
Yes.
Motion carried, eight to one.
Now, we're ready to vote on the amended special permit.
Correct.
Correct.
Okay, so if we vote on that without, so if we, site condition 1.6, we're saying, the way that you have amended your original motion is that that would remain?
That would, just a second, let me go back to.
It would remain but only be required at the time of the realignment of 112th Street to 110th Street, is how I believe, Commissioner Campbell.
That's the, that's the desire.
Any other questions or comments on this part?
No.
Okay, Jerry?
Okay, this is for the conditional approval of special permit 19038 as amended. Albadre?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Edgerton?
Yes.
Finnegan?
Yes.
Joy?
Yes.
Ryman Yost?
Yes.
Shear?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
Core?
Yes.
Motion carried, nine to zero.
Okay, we are ready for continued public hearing and administrative action on.
Okay. I would just note that Commissioner Shear has declared a conflict of interest on the next item, which is street and alley vacation 19006, and therefore is recusing himself from this portion of the hearing. Street and alley vacation 19006 is to vacate the north 142 feet of the alley adjacent to Lot 3, Block 86, original Lincoln subdivision, generally located between 9th and 10th Streets and M and L Streets. Staff recommendation is conformance with the comp plan. Are there any expertise communications to be disclosed on this item?
I don't see any. George?
Thank you, George Wesselhoff, Planning Department. Again, the alley vacation area in question is bounded by South 9th and South 10th Streets and also M and L Streets. It's the northern alley segment. You may recall at the last planning commission, there were concerns identified related to the alley vacation concerning the B&amp;J partnership property, which is located to the southeast of the alley vacation area. And so, those concerns specifically were sanitary sewer or sanitary sewer serviceability of the B&amp;J partnership building, storm water related to the closure of the alley in question, and also vehicle movements or truck movements in the alley. And so, all three of those areas were looked at by Lincoln Transportation and Utilities staff. The wastewater division looked at the sewer serviceability, the LTU watershed looked at the storm water, and LTU engineering looked at the truck turning movements. There was information provided by Campion in these areas. And overall, LTU staff is okay with this item moving forward, respective of those three areas. I would mention, respective of the, the traffic concern, that the closure of this alley or vacation and to address the concern of the truck turning movements would require a change in the direction of the alley as far as vehicle flow and also that the trucks appear to require a three-turn, three-point turn movement, but those are not insurmountable. LTU is okay with that. And so, again, staff is of the position that we are okay with this item moving forward. The recommendation is the same as in the staff report, that it's in conformance with the comprehensive plan. And if there are particular questions in any of these areas or related to the alley infrastructure, Bob Simmering with LTU can, can jump in.
Questions for staff right now? Yeah, Dick?
Did you participate in any meetings with the two parties?
No, not, not in any meetings with the two parties.
Okay.
Any other questions right now? Okay. I think we're ready for the applicant, then.
I'm Carter Page, 651 Drestwood, Northbrook, Illinois, and I am a partner with Campion in this development. And Nate Burnett is our engineer and he's going to go ahead and give you a description of what we looked at.
Nate Burnett, 601 Old Cheney Road, Suite A here in Lincoln. First, I just want to thank the city staff for their work in getting answers quickly to us as, as we worked on getting solutions to the concerns that were raised at the last planning commission meeting. As mentioned before, you today is a request to vacate the north 142 feet between L and M. This is for redevelopment, seven-story student housing as well as townhomes, total of 134 dwelling units and a parking garage for 256 parking stalls. I just want to point out the key quotes from the 2040 comp plan. In the staff report, talks about, you know, the 2040 comp plan says a major focus on new residential reuse, infill redevelopment that this project provides at, as well as maintaining the urban environment to include a mix of land uses, which again, this project does. In the staff report, it talks about this plan being consistent with the 2018 downtown master plan, as well as analysis stated in the report specified that the vacation would not affect the transportation system and again, is consistent with the comprehensive plan. At last planning commission meeting, September 4th, four concerns were raised by the property owner to the southeast B&amp;J. Those concerns were sanitary sewer connection. The next day, on September 5th, we had tenuous plumbing onsite. We had coordinated with Speedway to be able to gain access to the facility and we scoped the existing wash bays and the property to see where exactly the sanitary sewer services were connecting to the main. These are just pictures showing what was done. You can see here on this picture, it shows the depths of the sanitary sewer service going out to the main. Based on those depths and our field data, we were able to verify that the existing sanitary sewer services would still be serviceable. There's one on the west side. There's also one on the north side. This diagram here shows that it's a dead-end sanitary sewer main on the south side, which...
Can you zoom out just a little bit, because we can't see where you're pointing? Perfect.
That should work, Nate.
So, there's a dead-end sanitary main right now and this flows to the north up to M Street. Currently, from the alley on the east side of 10th Street, that flows to the west. We were able to, because of the drop flowing, flowing from south to north, to be able to reroute that around the block. And we've talked with Brian Kramer from Wastewater Department about this and based on our concept plan, he was, thought the concept would work and so, and based on this concept, we can keep those two existing sanitary sewer services intact. So, this is the first issue. The second concern raised was a truck turning movement. As George stated, we worked with getting a diagram together showing that if a three-point turn will work. LTU verified that late this morning, that, you know, it will require that three-point turn, but that movement will not hinder the tenants or the owners' concern about getting in that back corner. Just.
Go ahead.
The, the last two were regarding storm water drainage. In working with the architect and the developer, they have agreed that the building drainage will either be on the perimeter, either on the, on the east side of 9th Street, the south side of M Street, to minimize any drainage coming to the alley, which therefore leaves about just a little over a half an acre that would get to the alley. In working with Ben Higgins, I met him personally onsite the next day, September 5th. We looked at things, we worked on calculations. We can have a pipe that will handle the 100-year storm event, come through the parking garage. He was okay with an easement being within that building. In addition to go even beyond that, we've talked with Campion about allowing an overflow here just in case something were to happen, that the flow from the alley could come through the parking garage and be picked up by some inlet. So, we feel we've addressed that as well. And then lastly, there was concern regarding the slope down to that door. When we reroute that sanitary line, that currently flows west, now will flow east, a majority of that alley is going to be torn up anyways for that sanitary sewer reroute. So, we worked on a cost to do that, sent that to Campion and, and we're okay with redoing that alley to make the slope less steep. So, with that, I'd open any questions.
Go ahead, Dick.
Can you pull up the turn radius one again?
Sure.
What's the blue?
Initially, I would like to note, initially, a 30-foot truck turning radius was requested by the, the owner of 926L B&amp;J. And then yesterday morning, through planning, they had requested that a 40-foot truck be reviewed and so, we had done that last minute and got that stuff to LTU. So, I just want to thank them again for looking at that quickly since we just found out yesterday and now all of a sudden, we're looking at a 40-foot. So, this turning radius shows that they can pull in here. The blue is where Campion would allow an easement for, for this owner to be able to come in here, back up, use that, come out, back up, and then be able to exit down to L Street. So, we feel that of the four concerns that were raised, planning's recommending approval, we've addressed all these and would request your vote of approval.
I want to just make sure I understand, when you go and reroute your sanitary sewer?
Yeah.
You're going to basically regrade that alley so that that slope doesn't, it's not as steep?
Correct.
And then also, at that time, when you're done doing all that work, you're going to probably pave that alley?
Yep.
So, it'll be looking a lot nicer after it's done.
Yeah, the, the current, here's a picture of one of the current conditions, so you can see it's looking pretty rough. This was two weeks ago, so.
Great. Any other questions for the applicant right now? Oh, Kristi?
Yeah, real quick, thank you.
Yeah.
On this alley change, does that affect then the adjacent property owner's access to the parking lot?
We would.
Or have you addressed that with them?
What we would do is, we had counted in the cost estimate that there would probably be some grades that would be affected here. There's, you can see there's a railroad tie retaining wall. We would still maintain access there, but the grade might be coming down there. So, we accounted in our costs that there might be some additional payment on their property that Campion would pay for.
Okay. Great. Anything else before we let him off the hot seat? Okay, thank you. Testimony in support of this application? Testimony in support. Testimony in opposition?
Good afternoon. My name is Anne Post. I'm with Baylor Ebner Law Firm and I'm here on behalf of B&amp;J Partnership. As you're aware, the landowner in the southeast corner of the area and that is affected by vacation of this alley. So, today, I'm in front of you asking to defer action on this to a date uncertain, so that this can be brought back before you at a time when the parties have come to an agreement on the issues that vacation of alley, this alley vacation raises. Because since this matter was last in front of you, before the commission, we have made ourselves available for meetings. There has been limited discussion. Ideas have been presented, but nothing to the level of detail that gives us the assurances that our needs will be addressed if this project moves forward. So, for example, we have not seen, we have not seen detailed plans for how drainage is going to work. We have not seen detailed plans for the routing of the sewer. I learned details about the plans for regrading and paving the alley at the same time that you did, at least several details of those plans at the same time that you have. And then also, there are the plans for providing access that as they're currently drafted, aren't going to work for, for this property. And Tim is going to give us a few more details about that, but we need to be able to sit down with Campion and work through these issues. We definitely don't believe that they're insurmountable, but we do know that the communication hasn't happened right now. Also, another thing to know is that right now, ideas have been presented to you for how to address these. But as at this point, they are ideas, there's no binding agreements, nothing to, nothing that requires Campion to follow through with, say, for example, giving us those, the easement on their property to allow that truck turnaround. And so, if the commission moves forward with this right now, we, as a property owner, aren't going to have the ability to enforce any of the ideas that were presented to ensure that they come to fruition. Even if this alley vacation is contingent on, well, at least moving forward at city council, is contingent on entering into a redevelopment agreement, that could leave us with a situation of an alley that has been vacated, even if, an alley that's vacated and city property but no longer an alley, and then we move forward, even if a redevelopment agreement isn't approved. So, in that case, we would have city property, we, that we, B&amp;J Property, B&amp;J Partnership does not have access over, and that would be an issue that we would have to address at that time, caused by vacating this alley before a plan was in place for how access was going to be provided. And so, I would like to say that we had drafted a detailed agreement on how, detailed enforceable agreement on how we can move forward with this, with this alley vacation at the present time and also give B&amp;J the comfort that these issues would be addressed. We presented this to Campion yesterday, which is not a lot of time to read through and address a detailed agreement on these points, but it's the timeline that we have, based on the communications. And so, I present that and let you know that as evidence that we are committed to working through with this project. We don't, our, B&amp;J is not opposed to this project going through. What we do need, though, is assurances that, that we will have adequate access after this is built and that we have, at this point, and when this vacation of this alley goes forward, it is in conformance with the comprehensive plan because access is preserved to, to properties. There is efficient access for commerce in, within downtown Lincoln and that we have recourse to ensure that we have access in the future and we are able to take steps to ensure that. So, with that, I'm going to hand it over to Tim and Tim is going to talk about a few of the problems with the ideas as suggested that we'd be happy to work with Campion on but are not addressed at this time.
Good afternoon, Tim Gergen with the Clark Anderson Partners. Sorry, Bob, I'm going to rebut some of the LTU turning items and maybe just some information you haven't explored. The existing building is not a free-span building. The existing building has columns down the middle. This is the column line right through here. The existing building has a garage door here and how it has performed in the past, the truck would.
truck would come through and then go keep on going down the alley. These would be the service base of the building, and so cars would come in, pull in, pull out, come through here. But for the single-unit truck that we needed to get to function through the building, it comes through here. So the solution presented by the applicant is on the right track, but it'd need to be about double is what we, we're saying that would work. So the, the forward, back-end movement coming out this way would work, but it needs to be about double what they were proposing, just because of the way the truck is coming out of that building. And the way they had proposed, the truck was going to be doing more of the moving inside, but the columns inside the building would prohibit that truck be able to make that movement. The next item would be the access to this lot. So remarkably, this parking lot is also owned by Speedway. The trailer owner is, does not have access to that parking lot. So this is also owned by Speedway, and how they access the parking lot, they have to access it through the alley and up through this point, which is, as you can zoom out. There's the top of a car, there's the alley. It's about eight-foot height difference that that alley's coming up from. So from here to here. So a truck coming in and backing into that area. That alley was nonusable to begin with, but now we're trying to make it usable. So it's got to have serious grading add to it. So just like how the applicant has suggested they have to grade through it, it's going to be more grading than what they're anticipating. And those are some details we need to work through the applicant that has not happened yet. So this is the, roughly, a contour site plan. This alley comes up eight feet to a high point, and this is where this existing parking lot is accessing the alley. So in order for us to make that alley usable, for it to be a, an L-shaped alley, we would need to take out about six feet of grade from that alley, that high point, which then makes our lot, our access to our parking lot unusable. It's just such a, a shallow parking lot, and when you remove six feet off of this, you can't grade back into that and still make it usable for a parking lot. So for that reason, and for the reason why we had you postpone it last time, is there is no access. The access has not been worked out yet, and we're willing to work with the applicant on this, but we just need more details and to work with them. And again, postpone until we have all these details worked out on this east-west alley for access as well.
So, Tim, the, the truck movement that you're showing is internal within the building, and am I correct?
So, yeah. So the truck comes in and maneuvers out the door, and then we'd have to maneuver inside the applicant's building.
Mm-hmm.
The applicant was willing to give us about that much of an easement, but we would need to go significantly further into the building, about doubles what they were proposing, in order for that truck to come all the way in, back out, and then move back out this way.
I guess my primary concern is making sure that the alley is actually usable for an L. I'm not necessarily overly concerned as to how your client uses their building. Tell me why I should, why, why I care how your client uses their building.
Well, I would probably refer to Anne, I'm more on the law of that, but it's an existing condition, and it's being used today as an alley. So if all of a sudden you take away that condition, you take away some of the property value on that, and I would assume that could be open for lawsuit if the property is devalued from a city vacation where there's not some sort of repercussion added to that, because now all of a sudden we couldn't use that, that building as it's used today.
Yeah. So to echo that, what we care about is maintaining reasonable access, to make sure that this condemnation of this alley does not impair our reasonable access. Right now, our reasonable access includes being able to use this alley, to, to use this alley, to use this building for its purpose. It was built for this purpose of being able to pull a car, to pull a vehicle through there. And so by, by impairing the ability to do that, it is taking, it's essentially a taking of some of our property rights, and it leaves open, it leaves open the possibility for an inverse condemnation lawsuit, which is not, which is why this, why the city should be concerned with how our, with our access issue. It's not where we want to go, it's, we want to work this out at this point and find an access that works for everyone.
So, question for Tim, please. On the, what truck access you have shown then in the alley, like say you were just using the alley versus the building in the alley, where, show us the lines of how that truck works in the alley as it turns, if it doesn't go straight through.
Well, that alley would, they would just come in, so again, that we talked about, right now, the alley runs.
Right.
I don't know if you guys know this, but all alleys downtown are one-way from south to north and west to east. But this alley would then have to be reversed, and it would then be taking its access off Tenth Street and then running it this, through this way.
So that one way goes this direction currently?
Tim, can you pull up that one that you had the truck radius on?
This is a cleaner one.
There we go. Thank you.
Where's the doorway to that building? Right there. Okay. So you're showing the truck going through the building?
That's, that's correct. That's what it does today.
But could it not go down the alley and, and then back into that door, and then pull out and back up and make that turn to the south then?
Possibly go forward this way?
No. Coming off the, off of.
Tenth?
Tenth. And come in that way and go straight forward, and then back in through that door. What, what distances would you need for that?
I think it'd be similar to the, the same, what we have today.
But does that require less, less?
I would assume it'd require about the same, Dick.
Okay. For depth.
Right.
Into the easement.
Yeah. And we may even, I would say we may even want to have something like that, just the trucks, so they can angle in, backing in to that narrow of a, of a doorway is. Some truck drivers are really good, some are bad, but we always have to design for the bad ones. And I'd rather have a truck be pulling out of that doorway than backing into it.
And the easement though, that would go through, is, is part of the parking garage, correct?
Correct.
It's underneath the parking garage.
Yep.
And to clarify, yes, we would need an easement. At this point, we don't, we don't have an easement, we don't have a proposed easement. And that's one of the, our concerns with this moving forward, is that, that, that legally binding documentation, I mean, isn't in place, and there's not an agreement to have it in place. It's an idea.
And this is for the current tenant that operates the business? But I just happened to notice, I was driving by on my way to the meeting today, that there's a "for lease" sign, so is that business planning to continue operating there, or is that going to be turned over to something else that maybe doesn't need that 40-foot truck?
I don't know about the current status of the current tenant and the "for lease." I, I can tell you, I've seen that sign there, too. What I can tell you is that this building is built to be able to pull through. That is the value of this building for servicing vehicles like this. So assuming that there is no tenant, or there is a new tenant in there, I think it's a very reasonable assumption that it will be another tenant that leases this space to use it for this particular reason.
So what's in front of us today is, is to approve the vacation or stating that it conforms to the comprehensive plan? And what you're asking is not that we say it doesn't conform, you're, you're asking for another deferral, or suggesting another deferral?
Correct. So first, we would say that as, as is now, it does not conform because it doesn't provide us access, because it does not enable reasonable access to the property. But today, we're not asking you for that decision, we're asking for a deferral, we're asking for it to be deferred to no date certain because, you know, we were in front of you two weeks ago, we're in front of you now, and we don't, we want to come in front of you when we have a solution. And that's also why I raised the, made sure, disclosed that we had presented an agreement. We are committed to working towards that in a timely manner, but we don't want to have to keep coming to have this discussion with you every two weeks until we're ready to have the discussion. And we are fully prepared to move forward as fast as we can to get to that resolution.
Anne, that's my concern, that we did defer for two weeks with the understanding that everything could be worked out in two weeks.
Yes.
And, and now, we know the other side feels a time crunch. How long do you think this could take?
I think that from what was presented today, it looks like significant work has been done towards a resolution. I think one of the biggest issues with reaching a resolution is that it seems a lot of communication has gone from developer to city without us involved in the conversation. For example, if when we were discussing turning radius and what we would need, we were allowed, brought in on the conversation, we could have disclosed this issue with the columns, and that we would, to use this solution, we would need a wider, a wider easement, a wider area. So I think that the issue is, is that communication has been circuitous, where we're getting information on proposals from the city. And so if we can't, oh, when this is deferred, what we need to concentrate on is making sure to have a meeting with everyone in the room so that we can reach those solutions in a timely manner, so that we can have all the information. And I know that my client is committed to that, Tim is committed to that, we've made, we've made sure that he's available for those discussions, but they haven't happened yet.
So you were not contacted? I'm sorry.
Sorry.
For the meetings?
Yeah, I can, yes, we had limited discussions. There were discussions right after the meeting, there were, there was a memorandum of understanding that was passed between the parties, but nothing legally binding, that a lot of these, there was not the opportunity, and there was not a meeting that was held with all three parties around the table to hash out these, that the ideas went to the city and not to the entire group.
Did you reach out to the applicant at all about setting up a meeting to discuss these issues?
As I understand, my client reached out the day after, the day after Planning Commission two weeks ago to set up a meeting, and that initial meeting was held. We didn't get a response for several days on that, and then when that came forward, that, that didn't leave us a lot of time. I know that we have made sure to make ourselves available, they have all of our contact information. So I can tell you, I believe that contact was made, I believe that it was, I believe, I believe that was, I believe that offer was made. As an attorney that mostly presents in front of the city council or in front, and planning issues, I was in, Tim was more involved in the details of, Tim will be more involved in the details of those discussions. So I think it was more valuable to have the other parties at that meeting. And so that was a long answer to say, I believe it was made, but I may not have been as up on those communications.
Is the building fully leased right now?
That I don't know.
Portion of it is.
That's a yes or no, Tim? It's either fully leased or not fully leased.
It is not fully leased.
I know that there was mention made that if this project goes forward as it's proposed right now, that you guys wouldn't, that B&amp;J Partnership would not be able to access that northern lot of their property parcels. But to me, it looks like it's not used right now, otherwise it wouldn't be in the shape it's in. Does that make sense, what I'm saying? Like, the weeds wouldn't be growing as tall if it was being drive-on.
The, the parking lot right now, so again, we have to look at park property. So right now, the, the building is not occupied, so it's not being used for that. And so essentially, what would happen is, is this building was built and designed for an auto repair shop.
Mm-hmm.
And so the mechanics would be parked here in this parking lot and would be used. So since that building has been occupied, the weeds have probably been growing in that parking lot for the last, you know, year, I think it's been unoccupied right now.
Is there any chance that you could flip the drive-through portion and drive through on the, you know, east side instead of the, you know, straight through on the west side?
It could. I mean, that's all options that we are open to working with. There are costs with everything, you know, and those are costs would be, need to be borne by the applicant on that end.
So there, so I want to make sure that we're communicating here, there's infrastructure inside that building right now that prohibits them from turning, you know, from the eastern part of the building out that door?
That's great. There's a, a row of columns that would prohibit the single-unit truck to, to make a turn inside that building.
And the column is in the way there.
Right.
Not just.
Right.
Okay.
But there's actually not anybody operating in that building right now? And hasn't been for a year, which is why the alley's not used? It's just the, the business that uses this other lot?
The trailer owner of this lot operates a trailer business, and his office is in this building.
Yeah, his office is in the building, but he's not, currently, nobody's pulling trucks through that alley.
Currently, no.
I don't know if this is appropriate to ask, but I'm going to do it, because that's the kind of person I am. But would you be willing to sell this to these guys? I mean, has that discussion happened?
A form of that discussion has happened. We've offered to ground lease it and to them for a 99-year ground lease, and it was decided that that didn't meet their goals.
So the nice thing about that would be Speedway is the, on the other side of the alley, and if they purchase Speedway, then all the alley could go away in this block.
Is there anything specific to, what is, well, what is specific to the building other than the two doors that allow a truck to drive through? Is there anything else specific to the building in terms of it as an existing auto repair facility today?
It's, it's unique in that sense is that it is in downtown, and it has that type of access where you could drive through the building, and there is really no, not too many buildings in the downtown that has that ability to have a, an access, a driveway, and you could drive through that.
Sure.
The other auto repair shops that do operate in downtown have that ability, and if you remove that ability, you in essence condemn this building to be, no, it can't be an auto repair shop. And, and, in, in reality, it's, you know, it's not Class A office space-type building, you know, it is built and designed as an auto repair building.
To your knowledge, is there any historical significance to this building?
Not to my knowledge.
If they were working on a regular car, automobile, SUV, would there be issues getting out of that driveway into the alley?
It would still have some issues, but it would not be as large as what we're showing with the single-unit truck.
How long has it been since a automotive repair shop operated in that facility?
I'm not sure.
I don't know that.
Dick?
Why would, what need would there be for a 40-foot-long semi or truck?
That's where the auto parts trucks come in on.
They, the parts for repair come in on a, on a truck.
Right.
A 30-to-40-foot long.
Right.
Do you know the last time a truck went through?
I'm not sure.
Okay.
Any other questions for the applicant right now?
Nope. They're not the applicant.
Oh, that's right. For the testifiers?
Mm-hmm.
Nope.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you. Any other testimony in opposition? Staff questions? George is ready for us. George?
George, if we approve this, is it, what, three weeks before it goes to council?
Approximately, I'm not sure of the exact date. Others may be, be able to answer that question.
But roughly.
Roughly, yes. Okay. Thank you.
Fees would need to be paid, I believe. So we would need to get that determination from urban development first, and then the fees would need to be paid before scheduling it for city council.
Okay.
So it'd be several weeks, very likely.
Okay.
So three to four years, say, Jerry?
At a minimum?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Could be more.
Yeah.
Any other? Go ahead.
Sorry. So something that testifiers mentioned is that it does not conform with the comprehensive plan, as, if I understood correctly, as it stands currently. But your suggestion is it does conform, correct?
It does. The one thing I would add, and this is where legal counsel may need to chime in, is that I believe at the council level, either with this application and/or the redevelopment agreement, there may be the, the option to add a condition such as the common access easement provision. So yes, we were of the position it does conform, but this still has to go to City Council, and there may be additional opportunity to add things at that time.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. Any other questions right now for staff? Okay. Applicant rebuttal.
You want to start?
Sure.
So we received word from Speedway, who was the owner of B&amp;J, shortly before our last meeting, and we prepared that memorandum of understanding to address these issues, and we addressed the issues before the first meeting two weeks ago. We met at Speedway's offices, and they said, you understand, we're still going to oppose this. They didn't comment on any of them. They did suggest that, that there were severe, there was severe impact, but they would have to do, so we did that. You all recommended that it be deferred. We understood that. We stepped out of the meeting, and they said, look, this is all unnecessary. This can all go away if you just want to buy our property. Then they backed off and said, well, not buy, ground lease. So we said, okay. And I think this occurred in the presence. So we all went back to our places. I went back to Chicago. We did deploy Nate to get going on some of this other work. We then had a series of emails coming to us, do you want to buy it? Do you want to buy it? Or do you want to lease it? So we then proceeded to have a conversation, I think it was two of us, let's say midweek of last week, in which they presented the idea. They said, all of this is really unnecessary. Why don't you just ground lease it? The difficulty we faced were twofold. Number one is we had no use for the land, and number two, we're not particularly enamored with ground leases. But we were willing to consider it. So then we got together as a team. We talked it through, and came to the conclusion that a ground lease on land we have no use for makes no sense. On top of that, we then got a phone call kind of in midweek from a woman by the name Janet White, who announced that she actually owned a portion of the site, that what they were proposing with purchase or ground lease, they didn't own all of it. So we talked with her and realized that what they really have is just the building and then a sliver, and that kind of further, you know, causes to realize, okay, what are we really getting on this? So we declined to enter into a ground lease. There were no discussions whatsoever about any of the issues related to the alley, to, to any of these points during the two weeks intervening our last meeting. We continued to have Nate's team and the city work up these plans, as well as our architects, because that's really the, the direction that we wanted to take it. We then received yesterday morning, I think at about 9:00 AM, a rather lengthy agreement, which would have been not so much a memorandum of understanding, but a perpetual easement that we would be, we would be granting them. And of course, we're not going to enter to that. And I, I think we safely concluded that we understood what the end game was, but here we are. So we've also, in the meantime, Nate has done an excellent job of running down with the city, the, all the engineering questions. And I think we've also got some understanding of how the building has been used, and how the building will, is being used right now. And I may let Nate go through it in detail. Why don't you just go ahead and describe? The tenant is a tenant for both the land area, which Janet White owns, as well as the building. And he does lease the building, and he does use the building for doing modifications to either the trucks that he brings in, or to the, to, well, to the wagons and so forth that he's, that he's treating. So why don't you go ahead and describe how it's used?
So B&amp;J owns this sliver here, the building. Janet, as Carter had just mentioned, she owns this area, which the tenant leases from her. I believe the opposition has used the word reasonable access as to what they feel is not being provided to them. Here on the, the south side, there is a overhead door that can easily be accessed. This is a current photo of the facility. You can see that it's completely vacant. There's, there's nothing currently happening there. It should be noted from our field measurements, this overhead door is 10 feet. A typical straight truck is 12 and a half to 13 feet. A flatbed truck, again, would be the same height. So the 40-feet truck, if it's flatbed or straight truck, would not even be able to get through that door. So I think we're very in compliance with the comprehensive plan. We are providing reasonable access. If for some reason they would need to get back there, they can come into what we would grant them. We cannot grant an easement until Campion owns this ground. Currently, they just have an agreement, so we cannot give Speedway an easement on something that they don't own. They can back up if needed, pull out, back up, and then head south. Let's see.
I might go on on the tenant's use of it. When we asked him, does it use the back door? One of the, you know, he's been there for eight years. Someone asked, how often is it used? He said, once in eight years he used it.
Again, as you.
Okay. I'm sorry.
Yeah, and you can see from his response that the condition of the alley, so we feel.
We then asked him, we then asked him, well, when you pull your trucks in to do the work, how do you do it? He says, well, they come back out the front door. And then I said, well, why, they don't go through the back? He says, no, you can't get through there, because you can't, it's only 10 feet, but there's also an incline of about two and a half feet. So if a, even if a 10-foot truck were to try to go through it, it would get banged up against the top because it's on elevation. So there's no way to get a truck through it. So the only thing you can take is a panel van or a car. That's, that's the limit of what's there.
Thank you for those explanations. Any questions?
No. I do have one question. I apologize, Nate. I assume once your client takes ownership of the adjacent properties, that you do intend on granting the easement of the area in blue?
Yes.
Thank you.
I would entertain a motion.
I would move approval of street alley vacation 19006.
Second.
Discussion?
Yes, I, I think they've got plenty of time to come to the, their agreement before it goes to City Council. And if it gets to City Council, and they're still in disagreement, the City Council will then hear it. But I don't think we should hold this up any longer.
I agree.
I, I think allowing, I, I think that the applicant has made a reasonable effort to continue to allow reasonable access to the adjacent property owners using of the alley. I, I think that that question actually, and, and the impact that new development has on existing property owners actually does fall into a question of whether or not redevelopment plans conform to the comprehensive plan. The, I think that impact should, ought to be considered at this point. I think that the application, the applicant, however, has done a reasonable job to, to continue to allow reasonable use of the alley surrounding the adjacent property. I don't think it's really relevant if this building's occupied or not occupied. I, I do think that these changes to the site that the applicant has also proposed maintains a reasonable access.
I, I think for how the building is currently being used, and has been used for a long, for a while, that the applicant has made every reasonable effort to accommodate that and, and maintain that access, and so I will support the, the alley, street alley vacation. Jerry?
Okay, this is for finding of conformance to the comprehensive plan, street alley vacation 19006. Albardre?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Edgerton?
Yes.
Finnegan?
Yes.
Joy?
Yes.
Reiman Yost?
Yes.
Shear?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
Cor.
Yes.
Motion carried, eight to zero.
Maybe. Okay. Anyone want to make a motion?
Move to adjourn, Beckius.
Did we want to, is there anyone?
At this time, anyone wishing to speak on an item not on the agenda may do so. Okay, now I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to adjourn.
Second, Joy.
Jerry?
Albardre?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Edgerton?
Yes.
Finnegan?
Yes.
Joy?
Yes.
Reiman Yost?
Yes.
Shear?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.